Board meeting to order. It is 7:07 PM. It's Monday, July 27. We're in the administration building, 12121 West North Avenue. We will begin, please, with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Mrs. Galante, roll call, please.
Mr. Baden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here. Thank you. First item on our agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. If anybody would like to speak about anything that is not on tonight's agenda, please come forward. The members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we will move to approval of our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that Board members would like to remove for separate discussion or action? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casey. Any community comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, Mrs. Galante.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, thank you. Our first action item, human resources. Mrs. Fee, please.
Thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve the 2015-2017 Administrative Contract of Jennifer J. Schultz as Jefferson Elementary Principal effective July 28, 2015, for 221 days per year at a salary of $98,000 for 2015-16. It is further recommended that the School Board approve the 2015-2017 Administrative Contracts for Associate Principals at East High School for 221 days per year. For Andrea Kaplan, effective August 6, 2015, at a salary of $85,500 for 2015-16, and Robert L. Day, effective August 28, 2015, at a salary of $85,500 for 2015-16, and ISO move.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to do an introduction, Dr. Erdo?
Sure, just a couple of comments first that I'm thrilled to have the three of these people here this evening and also to join our school district. Going through the hiring process, we've been making comments about the pool of candidates this year that by far, at least since I can only speak the last 11 years, it's the deepest pool that we've had and to have these quality people come out of that deep pool of candidates, I'm thrilled to have them choose Wauwatosa and be part of our school district. And we'll start out, I guess, with Jenny, if you wanted to just say a few words or...
Absolutely. Do I have to use my microphone?
Please.
Okay. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I had a chance to meet a lot of you during the meet and greet, but if I did not have a chance, I'm Jenny Schultz and I'll be the new principal of Jefferson Elementary School. I had the fortune of working in the district last year as an instructional coach and think the district has great things going on. I'm excited to help move that work forward at Jefferson.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes will introduce the East staff.
I think I was here last year about this same timeframe. [laughter] Welcoming two associate principals, that's not about me, though. It is my pleasure to introduce the two new associate principals for East High School, Andrea Kaplan and Rob Day. Andrea comes from South Milwaukee Middle School, two years, and then two years in Wichita, Kansas, as well as teaching social studies there before moving back here to Wisconsin. Rob Day, right now is at Francis B. Starms Discovery Learning Center, has also done the social principal work at Milwaukee, Washington, and been a district curriculum generalist for many years around mathematics. So it's my pleasure to welcome both of them to our district.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
[laughter]
Short and sweet. Thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with you and with the students of Wauwatosa.
Hello. Again, my name is Robert Day and again, I appreciate the process was great. It was kind of bittersweet leaving. I spent 16 years at NPS. So started and hopefully, you know, I'll be here for a while. Looking forward for the long haul, so thank you, guys.
Thank you very much and welcome to everybody. I'm assuming Board members had the opportunity to ask questions or say hello. So thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it and good luck. So we do need to have a vote. Mrs. Galante, please.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, thank you. Our next item, superintendent's report action. Mr. Baden, please.
Thank you. It is recommended that the School Board approve renewal membership dues for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, WASB, for 2015-16 school year at a cost of $9,671 and ISO move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Board members, question or comments on the renewal of the WASB contract? Any community comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Galante, please.
Mr. Baden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. We will move on to reports. So the first report from the Teaching and Learning Department is the math audit.
While we're getting that up and running, I will introduce the three individuals that are here tonight. These are three of the four math audit team. We have Connie Loughlin here. Connie is an elementary middle school specialist. She consults in that area of math and has for like many years. And then we have Dr. Michael Steele, who's a professor of math education at the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee. And we have Dr. Kevin MacLeod, who is a math professor at the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee. They're going to share with you a summary of the math audit that they conducted in the school district this past year and share with you some of those results.
So we thank you for the, well, first, the opportunity to look at what's going on in Wauwatosa. Some very good things indeed we saw. For the opportunity to report tonight. As Beth indicated, Janice Freckman cannot be here tonight, but the other three of us are. We thought we would start just with a couple of comments about the Common Core. First, to commend Wauwatosa for adopting it, introducing a certain amount of stability in the district vision and curriculum for mathematics. We thought, for those who don't know, perhaps in the audience, we would just point out that this is a set of standards that were developed, not quite grassroots, but certainly at state level by the National Governors Association and the Council of Chief State School Officers. When they were adopted, they were adopted by individual states, including Wisconsin. They're a rigorous, coherent set of standards, internationally benchmarked. And one thing that I, as a mathematician, am particularly happy about is that they include standards for mathematical practice as well as standards for mathematical content. So not just what we want students to know, but how we want students to think about mathematics and what mathematics as a living coherent subject really is. Some of our ideas on what we should be aiming for in any school district, if you're aiming for an exemplary math program, let all students understand that, as I said a minute ago, mathematics is a dynamic, coherent, interconnected set of ideas. Let all students understand concepts and use them powerfully and that the teachers and students imply, employ those standards for mathematical practice. Things like problem solving, applying mathematics in the real world, making connections, using reasoning and proof, creating different representations for mathematical ideas and being fluent in going back and forth between them, between visual representations and data tables and graphs and so on. And then, of course, being able to communicate their ideas. There really is no point in having solved a mathematical problem for your employer if you can't then tell him or her what you've done and what his or her next steps are. The purpose or purposes of the audit were to assess aspects of curriculum instruction, assessment, and student learning across the district to try and assess the effectiveness of the current mathematics program. I'd just say there perhaps that we took this remit as looking at the core math curriculum. We have no particular expertise in and we did not look at special education. Neither did we look at gifted and talented programs. To relate program practices to current research and current ideas of best practices. And then, of course, the real importance of an audit such as this to identify potential directions for investment and development over the next five years. So hopefully, we've communicated to you possibilities for your next steps. So we looked at, we carried out various audit activities, classroom observations in several classrooms across the district at all grade levels, kindergarten through BC calculus, 12th grade, interviews of various stakeholders, teachers, principals, administrators, some surveys, teacher surveys and a parent survey. We looked at some student work. We selected some Common Core-aligned tasks at various grade levels and asked students to complete them. We talked a little bit more about that process, but that gave us some very interesting data to look at. And then just analysis of official district data, pass rates, achievement rates, and so on. But I said before, we saw a lot of good things. Common Core, the district is aware of the Common Core. The district has adopted the Common Core. Teachers are aware of the Common Core standards, including standards for mathematical practice, and they talk well and fluently about those. Teachers generally are using curriculum materials that the Board has adopted, has provided for them. They're using them well. We note that there's been a lot of work to change the K-12 assessment system, moving toward best practices of formative assessment and so on. We think that's a real strength. And teachers in the district are ready for professional development. They're aware of the Common Core, but they don't necessarily feel that they know how to teach it as well as they might, and they're hungry for more. And again, that desire of teachers to improve their classroom practice and to align it to the state and district standards, we think it's a real strength.
So the findings of the audit, Janice Freckman and I were working with the elementary teachers, K-5, and then Mike and Kevin did the bulk of the work in the middle school. So I will address what we found in the elementary school. In the elementary school, there have been supplemental resources given to the teachers to teach more to the Common Core because the Board adopted curriculum is older and there are clearly not, there's clearly alignment issues and issues of rigor. So because there are multiple sources of teaching materials, there's inconsistent use of those multiple resources. That is not to criticize the teachers. They are really trying very hard to communicate with each other and figure out what is the best way to do this. But because they don't have one coherent set of teaching resources, this is a challenge. To some degree, the teachers are employing the math practices. An area that is an area that can be strengthened, particularly the area of discourse between students and teachers and student to student. And when you read the Communication Standard, teaching practice, it is not just the teacher communicating information, but it's the conversations that are established in the classroom between teachers and students and orchestrating that discourse and then also between students and students. We did find at the elementary level that there has been limited professional development opportunities for teachers, which is part of the reason that Kevin alluded to the fact that they are actually very hungry for more. They have received a really nice dose of professional development around literacy. So they know what that is like and they're looking for something like that for mathematics. And at the elementary level, the common assessments that have been developed in K-5 have really moved assessment forward at that level. It is a strength. The teachers know that they can continue to improve that process, but they, what's happened with the benchmark assessments in the elementary level has been very informative for the teachers in changing their practice for the better.
I'll talk a little bit about the results at secondary. You're going to see that many of these mirror what Connie's just walked you through for elementary. And then I've got a few slides after this that actually are going to dig into the data for actually four of these five boards in a little bit more detail. So here's the overview. We found in general instructional quality was a little bit weaker in secondary. In general, what that looks like is more sorts of classes where teachers are standing up and lecturing and delivering material, limited opportunities for students to think and communicate and reason about mathematics in the way that we want them to be. I wouldn't say it's weak. I'd say it's weaker as compared to what we have in elementary. I'll dive into that a little bit more with the next few graphs that I'll show you. One thing we did see very little of are the press for student explanations, justifications, and perseverance in more complex problem solving. Much of what we saw in those secondary classrooms was fairly routine. Here's a procedure. Here's a set of problems to do it. You know, go ahead and work through those. And that's certainly an important component of the mathematics program, but it can't be the only component of the mathematics program. Connie mentioned the curriculum situation at elementary and it mirrors the same sort of thing at secondary. I want to add a little bit of context here as well. The Common Core state standards came around in about 2010. Wauwatosa's done a nice job of bringing some stopgap materials to enhance what's already been adopted. The fact is high-quality curriculum materials that are really truly aligned to the Common Core from the bottom up have just come on the market in the last 18 to 24 months. So what we're talking about now is a situation that's changed, a market that's changed since the last curriculum adoption. There's a desperate need for higher-quality, Common Core-aligned curriculum materials at the high school level that mirrors the same sort of situation at the elementary. Kevin mentioned we administered student assessments that targeted these mathematics practices that both had a content component and a communication component. How well do students communicate their thinking about the mathematics? At secondary, the results are a little bit disappointing. Students showed limited abilities to solve and communicate about rich math tasks. I'll show you some snapshots of what that looked like at particular grade levels and for particular courses. At secondary, we've also got an increased sort of acceleration situation that happens formally starting in the middle school where students have the opportunity to accelerate their mathematical study. And looking across this, this last bullet should not be a surprise and I know the Board has talked about this a little bit before, is that non-white and economically disadvantaged students are less likely to be placed in accelerated courses when acceleration starts and they're less likely over time to remain there. And that's a significant issue that we feel like the district needs to pour some attention in. And of course, if you've looked beyond the bounds of Wauwatosa, this is a situation that most other peer districts in the area are facing and trying to confront. So let me dig just a little bit into some of the data that we found and I want to start related to that first bullet on instructional quality. The instructional quality data comes from our observations of classrooms. We took a random sampling of teachers. We went into classes at every grade level in every school across the district. And we looked at kind of three categories of ideas here. This first one is academic rigor. I will note for all of these graphs that you're about to see, except for the very last one, and I'll flag that again, you see a zero to four scale here. The sorts of mathematical thinking and reasoning that's embodied by Common Core that's that rich, complex problem solving is a three or a four on these rubrics that we used. A zero, one, or a two is more procedural, more memorization, those sorts of things. So what we want to see overall, over a long snapshot of time, is something that's kind of at least at that two and a half mark or above on average. So you'll see in terms of the tasks that teachers chose on the left, the way those tasks were implemented in class, what are students asked to do mathematically, the sorts of discussions that students are asked to have, and the power of teachers' questions. Are they asking good questions that get it mathematical meaning and ask students to communicate? You see a snapshot there, and all of these will follow the same pattern. The gray bar on the left is overall and then you've got each of the four grade bands that we looked at, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, in high school. With my particular focus and lens towards secondary, we see some strong work that happens in elementary, particularly related to the tasks that we choose. We see there's a bit of a drop-off in terms of the rigor as we get into middle school and high school, those red and those green bars up there. Student discussion overall, and Connie mentioned this as well, is not quite where we want to see it. That's a process for teachers as well as students. The way we're asking students to engage with and talk about the mathematics is different than it was five, 10, 15 years ago. The rigor of teacher questions also impacts that. If teachers are asking better questions, students are going to rise to the occasion, give richer responses, and dig into the mathematics. We see some really nice work happening here at elementary. We'd like to see that work sustained at secondary. The second set of rubrics really does focus on discussion. It's something called accountable talk. How accountable are teachers for holding students responsible for good mathematical explanations? How accountable are students for actually engaging with those? So you see two rubrics on the left that are about teachers linking contributions to one another and students linking their contributions. So if Kevin says something and I'm a student and I've got something to add to it, I can say, I'd like to add to what Kevin's saying by describing the way this particular mathematical array, this multiplication problem is working. So that's the sort of conversations that are the target here. Again, we see some good work, particularly with teacher linking going on early on in elementary. We see it dropping off a bit at the secondary level. Students' ability to link contributions to one another, to listen to what one student says and build on it mathematically, these are the sorts of conversations we see happening in other disciplines, in English and history, that we expect. And we want to see the same things happening in mathematics. We're not seeing that same student linking happening here. The asking and the providing are the teachers' requests to make those links and the students' responses in making those. We see a little bit of a better picture there, but again, still the same pattern. Some stronger work in elementary, a little bit of a drop-off in the secondary grades. Then finally, we chose not all eight, but really five of the eight standards for mathematical practice that we thought we could walk into any classroom and see something that would, that would give us a sense of how rich are the mathematical practices. The one on the left is about engagement. These are zero-three scale now. Modeling is actually zero to two, so that one looks a little bit lower and it is a little bit lower, but it's only a ceiling of two. Engagement is how engaged are the students in actually doing mathematics? And we see the picture is fairly good here. Students in general are engaged in doing mathematics and in doing work and in talking about mathematics, most of the time in math class. Perseverance is the one that I take away from this set of graphs that I think is absolutely the most critical. So to get a score anywhere above one on perseverance, students had to be doing something that required them to think and reason, some sort of level of complexity of the problem. It couldn't just be, I know the steps to take and I'm just applying those steps. So something a little bit more complex than that. It wasn't a very high bar. We see great work going on here in elementary. We do not see that sort of work happening in secondary. Mathematical modeling is critical. It's, you know, it's the question, I think, that Kevin raised earlier. If my boss asks me to do something practical and use mathematics to do it, how well am I able to connect that back to what the context, what the situation was? We'd like to see those sort of contexts happening in math class much more often than we see just naked number and variable problems without any sort of context. We're not seeing that happening yet. Of all the things that I think a curriculum adoption would help, modeling is going to be the one because then you've got a good source of problems that have context, that have meaning, so that students will be able to walk out of math class and understand how they apply these ideas, not just what are the steps I need to do. Making use of structure is about seeing what the bigger ideas are in mathematics. We see sort of middling scores here. We also don't see that, quite that same trend that we have been seeing about strong in elementary, a little bit weaker in high school. And I think that's, I think that's good. And in general, precision is pretty good. We've got a bit of a dip at the middle school and it would be interesting to think about why that might be. To do well with precision, the sorts of language that both teachers and students were using had to be mathematically precise. We had to be talking about, the concepts that we're talking about. We're talking about a trapezoid. We're going to be careful about how we define it, what it means, and attending to that sort of precision. In general, that's one I'd like to see scores of two or three on, and in general, we are. I want to share just a few results and unfortunately, those did not translate well fund-wise. So we'll just make, we'll make the best of that. These are also in the audit report in full tables. All of our student assessments were scored on a rubric of zero to two, zero being lower performance, two being the strongest performance, both in terms of the content, how accurate was the mathematics that students did, and the communication, how able were they to communicate their thinking? And what I tried to pull in here are snapshots at sixth grade, eighth grade, and I've got a couple of high school tables on the next one. And the shaded blue squares are the ones where the majority of students were. So for our math six students, on content and communication from zero to two scale, most of those students scored a zero. In the accelerated math class, about the same number of students, they're scoring a one, which is right about in the middle. We'd love to see them scoring two on these. But again, I think this ties to issues of curriculum and the opportunities that students have to engage in this sort of thinking and reasoning. You're going to be a little bit cut off in the eighth grade. That bottom one is the math eight, the algebra one, and the geometry students, all in eighth grade across the district. Your algebra one students there, the majority of them, just by a little bit, were in the zero range. The math eight, zeros for content and for communication there. The geometry students did a little bit better. You had, it's a smaller number, but you had the majority of those scoring at one out of two. In the high school, we grabbed our algebra one and our transition to algebra students, which is going to be mostly the majority of your ninth graders. Again, our majority here is zeros across Again, our majority here is zeros across the board out of two. And then we wanted to take a look at kind of the last set of courses that are going to be most commonly required, which are your algebra two set or your college prep math for some of those students. Again, are the majority scoring and all those, I know you can't see this, I'm cheating off of Kevin's screen, are zeros across the board. It's also notable that those algebra two items we gave to pre-calculus students, calc A B, calc B C, statistics, the majority of those students scored a zero out of two on the algebra two items going up. These are the sorts of items that require the complex thinking and reasoning about mathematics that students both in STEM careers and in non-STEM careers are going to need to do. The application and the communication is particularly important for those non-STEM students. Your journalism majors, your nursing majors, who are going to go out and need to engage with some mathematics as a part of what they do. We're not seeing the results that we would want to see yet there. The last two charts, and I'm trusting since these are smaller, they're actually going to appear on the screen, are about the demographics. So we took snapshots. You have a full accounting of every grade level in the full report, but for this, I grabbed some snapshots of grade six, grade nine, and grade 11 in terms of who are our students in the general track and in the accelerated track. What we see in sixth grade is a snapshot where about two-thirds of the students, close to two-thirds of the students in the general track are non-white, and about a third of students in the accelerated track. If you look down that left column, you can see that split decreases. More students fall into that general track, less students are persisting in that accelerated track. In contrast, on the right are your white students. You see a relatively stable set of statistics. In fact, a little bit of an increase from grade six to nine, and then a bit of a drop-off in high school. And we know in high school is when students have different priorities. More of them in general start with accelerated courses and leave them across all content areas. So I think some of that shift is situational, but when you compare the non-white and the white students, there's no way to look at those numbers and not see that there's a stark situation here that needs to be looked at. In terms of economic advantage, disadvantage, in terms of disability, ELL, our numbers are fairly low in terms of the number of ELL students, but we include it here for completeness. But the economic disadvantage is the one that jumps out at me again. So if you look at in grade six, you've got 150 students in the general track that are not economically disadvantaged, 237 in the general track. You look at those, the 92 and the 23 next to it, and it's a very clear picture. And of those 23 students in sixth grade that are in the accelerated class but are in an economic disadvantage, you see there's 12 at ninth grade, there's seven at 11th grade. So you see those students systematically falling out of those accelerated tracks, falling back to the general tracks, just in part correlated to the economic disadvantage. The disability numbers show you the same picture in the next column. The ELL numbers are too small to really draw any meaningful conclusions, but you see some of the same splits. The ELL students do tend to end up in that general, start and end in that general track. So that's my brief dive into the data. Okay, maybe it wasn't that brief. I'm going to turn it back over to Kevin to summarize with our recommendations.
Yeah, so there are longer versions and more details of the recommendations in the full report. But briefly, as you mentioned a couple of times, there are now Common Core-aligned, genuinely Common Core-aligned curricula on the market, and we strongly recommend that Wauwatosa looks into adopting one such set of curriculum materials. Professional development, as you adopt new materials, as you continue to support and work with the Common Core, teachers will need professional development to align their instruction with that set of standards and generally improve instruction overall and address some of the issues that Mike's data showed you. Some of that, we think, also should be addressed with building-level leadership, whether this is math coaches, some kind of mathematics teacher leaders. But teachers seem to be needing and asking for closer guidance and closer leadership perhaps, something that is easier to go to on a day-to-day basis or even hour-to-hour basis. This class didn't work. What could I do better? As you mentioned, there's been a lot of work on improving the assessment system. We applaud that. We like the move to formative assessment. Where still, I think, needs to be continued work done on implementation and especially the communication of what this assessment system is about and is for to various stakeholders. And as Mike stated very strongly, look into that achievement gap, or those achievement gaps, and ask what steps can the district do to address the achievement gaps? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you take questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Board members, questions or comments? Mrs. Fee?
Yes, I'll just, you've given us a lot to think about, and obviously, this is a very in-depth and time-consuming endeavor that you undertook, and we do appreciate that. I appreciate that, and I can always speak for myself. I think that this is something that we're going to have to, with the guidance of the administration and working as a team, figure out how to proceed, but you've given us a lot of information, and I do greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. We've talked a lot about reading, and I think about reading and struggling readers. So now I'm thinking about people that struggle in math. Did you look at, and are there recommended ways to catch kids that have trouble in math in the very early grades to keep them from falling behind? Because I assume in math, it's like reading, that once you get behind, it just kind of snowballs, and you have difficulty, even more difficulty going forward. Is that, was that part of what you looked at? Or like, how would you detect whether a student in kindergarten or first or second grade are struggling, and what are the best ways to deal with that?
I will say that strategies of that type were not directly what we looked at. We were looking at the current situation. So we did look at data for groups of students that were falling behind. There certainly are recognized strategies for addressing students who are struggling. I think Beth wanted to say something?
I would only just add to that, that we do, just as we do with literacy, we track data on our struggling math students. We also have our Title I teachers in six or seven of our schools, depending on what our Title I funds are like, give us mass support in the elementary schools to work with those students using different research-based interventions. So we do track that data and treat those students and their interventions in the same way we do for reading. It's, I would say this, it's a little more difficult to find quality math intervention materials or strategies than it has been for reading, but we have really good success with our math interventions, though.
I'll just add about, I read a study a couple of years ago that looked at, it was a meta-study, looked at studies that were done on children's education. And their conclusion was that for every study we have on how children learn mathematics, we have 17 studies on how they learn to read. There's a huge imbalance, and that imbalance actually goes right the way through the system. I would ask you to look at the amount of money that Wauwatosa spends on improving or professional development, for example, in literacy. And compare it to the amount you spend for professional development in math. If you're like any other district that I know of, there will be a huge imbalance there.
Thank you.
I'll just add one more thing to that also. I think one of the most important things in catching those students early on is the ability to identify what core instruction looks like. So if core instruction in the early elementary grades looks like memorize these procedures, memorize these facts as compared to, here's a problem to tackle, and there are five different ways that you can tackle it, and we don't care which way it is that you do it, the second one gives more kids access, right? Because if I don't know that memorized procedure or that memorized fact, I'm sunk in down behind. But if we have more opportunities for kids to engage in different ways in the mathematics, we're going to catch more, we're going to keep more kids on grade level to start with. So I think that would be a good first step in a strong intervention program is good core instruction.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Casey?
I would like to thank you for this report. I think it's great meat, and it's going to help us move forward and make the appropriate decision for our students. So I really, really appreciate it, and I love the way that you presented it in a way that I can grasp it. I know with math, it's kind of its own entity in education, you know, there's, you know, there's, I think, two questions, but one question is, in your graphs, there seems to be always, you know, a dip between the elementary and the middle school, and then the middle school and the high school. And I know we do have a program that's comprehensive, like K five, and then something else at the middle school, and then, you know, high school. But how can we strengthen that connection between those gaps? You know what I mean, between elementary and middle school? Is, trends, suggestions?
So, one of the recommendations around that new curriculum resource adoption is that in the next year, the district would take this time to actually begin an in-depth study of what is available, and in small cases, pilot some of these materials to see how they work. And because maybe the district's resource finances would not allow you to adopt all of it at one time, but it would give you a chance to have a coherent look about how, what happens in the K five actually seamlessly moves into the six, eight, and then to high school. And right now, that isn't the case. The high school materials are significantly older, as far as the core adoption, than the middle school and the elementary materials. So there is some disconnect logically, just because they change buildings, the teachers don't necessarily know each other. But you will have the opportunity in the next year, two years, to actually take a real hard look at how all of these things fit together.
And I think the curriculum and the expectations for students is another part of that. So if at K five, we've got kids talking about mathematics, engaged in multiple representations, and doing things different ways, and drawing pictures, and creating graphs, and that sort of thing. And let's say I'm a kid and I get to sixth grade, and now the game has changed. It's not about doing that anymore. It's about memorizing these procedures, it's about doing these worksheets. Of course, you're going to see changes in what students are able to do because we've changed the game for them. So I think that's a really important thing to look at in terms of curriculum adoption is, there's not necessarily a canonical set of three programs that all go together really nicely, K 12, but what should be looked at is what are the expectations? What are we asking students to do? What are the math processes that we're asking them to do? And how are those carried forward from the K five work to the six, eight work to the nine, 12 work?
Excellent, thank you. I know that it's been a while since we reviewed math, and I believe we're in good hands, and the administration's going to find some great resources. And so thankful to have these resources right here in our community. Thanks again.
Thank you. Mrs. Muilphill?
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. Where, just piggybacking on what you just said, where could we put our biggest impact right away? And it might not be something you could answer for us, but if, you talked about limited resources and adopting in pieces, and where in your opinion could we make the most impact right away?
You know, everyone will have Me Syndrome here. So the elementary teachers are going to want what they want, and the middle school teachers are going to want what they want, and the high school teachers are going to want what they want. But if you look at that data, you can see a dip. You can see things go down in middle school to high school. So the data might say that. And I think this is your decision as a district, but when you look at where things are not as, not where you would want them. We want everything better, but if you want it not where you want them right now, it is at the secondary level. So I don't know if you agree with me.
I do, and I'll get on a little soapbox here. I think at the secondary level, one of the things you've got is, that the secondary teachers need is, I talked about kind of that teacher-fronted, that lecture-fronted, that memorization and procedure-heavy sort of instruction. And we've got teachers enacting that, and one of the reasons they're enacting that is because that's all that they've likely ever known about math teaching. So they need some support to change what instructional practice looks like, to really truly see that kids will rise to that occasion when we give them the opportunity to grapple with rich, complex mathematical tasks. I think they haven't had the opportunity to try that as much as they can because they've been focused on, I've got to learn what these new content standards are, I've got to learn how we're reorganizing geometry this year, I've got to keep up with covering the curriculum. But I think knowing these teachers, and Kevin and I have worked with several at the secondary, we're working with them next, actually, next Monday and Tuesday, I think they're ready to see a different way forward. And it's going to be, I think the best investment in the next year is going to be support for them implementing some of these stronger instructional practices and getting images of how to do that. You can put the best curriculum in the hands of teachers who aren't equipped to use it, and it'll be a failure because the teachers won't be equipped to use it. So if I had to say, that's where the investment needs to be.
And then professional development, and really that working with them in the classroom where we have our, you know, teacher leaders and our instructional coaches. So that's very encouraging. I also had a question on the data. I wasn't sure that I completely understood the scenario of zero, one, and two scores when you were talking in the sections. So what is our ideal situation with, you want two?
We want two. The rubrics and-
I'm sure, I was sure you were going to say that.
Kevin did a little more of the scoring, so I'll let him add on here. But we tried to, we tried to create an attainable two, right? It didn't have to be absolutely letter and number perfect in every single way. It had to be a really good effort to explain and demonstrate the mathematics.
Yes, I mean, I say, for a one, since they had to, they had to get something, something significant right. For a two, as Mike said, it didn't have to be perfect, but it had to be, it had to be very largely correct. As I went through, I actually tended to get a little sloppy. I tended to give twos a little more often than perhaps I started off being, according to my rubric. Let me see if I can, if I can give an example. So the geometry question was about what a can of tennis balls would look like in an X-ray machine. So imagine you have a can, four or five tennis balls in a row in the can, and you put this through the X-ray machine, what are you going to see? If you cut it down the middle of the can and then put it through the X-ray machine, what would you see? So it was about taking this context, visualizing it three-dimension, being able to draw a two-dimensional picture of what you would see on the X-ray machine screen. There were several parts, and if they got, say, if they got the first two parts right, I would give them a point there for the content point. The explanation point tended to be, well, for example, there were students who tried to answer this question without ever drawing a picture. I really, I think it's hard to describe what a can of tennis balls will look like in an X-ray machine without drawing a picture. So they pretty much had to draw a picture to get the explanation, some kind of picture to get an explanation point or a communication point. And then the question was sort of, how good was the picture, and how many parts did it draw the correct picture for? Something interesting that happened on that one, there was a, I wouldn't call it a, it wasn't a vocabulary error, but there was certainly a vocabulary issue in the question. And if a student didn't understand, didn't understand the meaning of the word opaque, their answers to parts one and two were essentially flipped. And if it was clear to me that this was a vocabulary issue and not a math issue, I would give them the point, even if they had the answers flipped. Now, that part I defended. Now that part I defended from the communication. If they were communicating to me what they were doing well enough that I could see this was a vocabulary issue, they could get the, they could get the point. So as I'm interested, it was that, it was that kind of thing. They had to get something right to get a point and they had to get substantially right to get both.
Well, thank you. That's very helpful. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that, that section.
Anyone else? Mr. Button?
Thanks again for the, uh, in-depth report. I just wondered if you had looked at the correlation between what you're doing this audit and how our students are actually performing. Do you know what I mean? In terms of the MAPS test and, and, I mean, you were, you're in the classroom-
Yep.
And you're looking at the Common Core and seeing how teachers are engaged or not engaged with their students. And are you concerned or is this, do you know what I'm asking? In terms of the correlation between performance and some of these standard assessments versus?
Yes, I, I, I think, I'll jump in.
Please.
But this is my, one of my soapboxes. I, I think, I think this is a very big issue for us right now as we try to transition to the Common Core. I think you can point to lots of assessments, all of which are pretty well aligned to each other and on all of which your students do pretty well. Math tests, ACT, college placement math tests, um, maybe even, you know, uh, grades in college algebra or calculus courses. And none of those assessments, in my opinion, are particularly well aligned to the Common Core and in particular to the standards for mathematical practice. All of these things I've mentioned, including courses at university, including my own university, um, tend to be very procedural. They don't emphasize problem solving. They don't emphasize perseverance. ACT is multiple choice. Roughly speaking, the students have one minute a question, I think, one and a half minutes per question. How do you address perseverance if you have one and a half minutes per question? And so it's a very tricky issue, I think. You can point to a lot of data which all aligns and all says students are doing well. But you, somehow you need to have this extra layer in your curriculum. I, I don't mean that they shouldn't do well on these other assessments, but those assessments aren't testing some of the things that we really value.
I'll add on to that. We actually have the, the MAP data and some of the ACT data that's in the full report. We didn't put that in the slides, but you can, you've got the full report. You can, you can take a look at some of that. I, I agree wholeheartedly with what Kevin's talking about. And I also say that if we can improve students' abilities to persevere in mathematics, to get them feeling like they can do mathematics and can do complex mathematics, I think they're gonna feel better about, even though the assessments are relatively procedural, about going in and tackling that ACT where it's one minute per question. So if we get them feeling like they can think mathematically and reason, um, they're gonna do at least as well as they've been doing, if not better. So my, my suspicion, and I, I, I'd move my chips to the center of the table on this, is that as we improve the outcomes here, particularly at secondary with those math practices, you, it's not gonna be at the detriment of the standardized test scores and theoretically, we should at least see those notch up a little bit.
Yeah, because it, it seemed to me when we were looking at standardized test or whatever, um, math area was one area that we were doing pretty well. I mean, if we looked at the MAPS scores and so forth, compared to literacy and so forth, so I just wondered, I, you know, I appreciate your emphasis because I, I agree, um, with that and I think the better we can do that. But it's also what, you know, we promote the district in terms of how we are doing. I mean, you can look in the literature, whether it's Walbutosa or any other, and this is what they're sharing with the public. In terms of how our kids are doing, they're doing pretty well, but I understand about improving the, the depth and the breadth of what's going on. Second question related to maybe what's your observation. Could you speak at all about the climate? Uh, you mentioned the word engagement. So the climate that was taking place in this, the classroom? Cause you, 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 you indicated to me that the kids were, you thought they were engaged, but maybe not at the level. Do you know what I'm asking in terms of you walking in and it was more the teacher doing their thing versus the kids?
Um, glad I put the engagement scores up there. I think to get, if I remember correctly, to get a two, for the duration that we're in the class, um, particularly in secondary, we had to see kids engaged in doing something that was not just sitting and listening or taking notes. Some actual mathematical doing or thinking, um, at least a third of the time that we were in there. And I think the ceiling from a, a two or three was about two-thirds. It may have been seventy-five percent. So, we, we had to see kids doing something a fair amount of the time. So you can take a look there and the middle school were at about one and a half. So, you know, maybe in about fifty percent of those classes, there was kids, kids were engaged in mathematical work a third of the ti- a third or more of the time and about half of them, it was less than that. We see more engagement in doing something mathematical, for example, in high school. I think that the climate in general is still a little bit dry. I mean, it could be more engaging for kids. The, the positive part of this is even when it wasn't the most kind of engaging, interesting, context-rich lesson in the world, when teachers asked kids to do the math, they were doing the math. I mean, they weren't sitting there kind of off in space and lao-ling. Teachers were getting kids to do mathematical work, which is a great starting point for us to build on, to up the, you know, the complexity, the modeling aspects of that work.
Just, just to follow up with your comment and to what Mrs. Casey was alluding to. In many ways, math, mathematics is its own entity, language, whatever. And when you talk about, uh, social studies, science, literature, those are common dialogues. You know, you and I can talk about a play, a movie, its historical context, et cetera. It's a lot easier for a lot of kids, just because of social media. You can draw all sorts of, you know, parallels into, you know what I'm saying? And so the training to get these kids to think and breathe mathematics has to begin early on, but it's still, it's within that framework. Do you know, do you wanna understand what I'm saying? So if I'm teaching on, on, on wars or something else, there's a whole plethora of things that can be brought in. In mathematics, it's sometimes it's, it's limiting and sometimes it can exclude kids of, because of their limited background. Do you understand what I'm saying? In terms of having a dialogue about a literature story or historical significance, so. I think it needs to be there. Don't get me wrong about it, but I, I just think that there, there is a big challenge to, to get the breadth and the depth.
Um, and I, I think, so, so two things on that. First, as you say, um, this, this has to start early and it has to happen often. This, this modeling score that you have here really is, I mean, the, the Common Core talks about solving problems arising in the real world, but I would be even more, more broader than that. Just seeing mathematics occurring in the real world. Anytime you open up a newspaper and see a chart, right? USA Today, I guess, has a, has a mathematical table or chart or data on the front page every day. Well, can you make sense of that chart? Would it occur to you to try to make sense of that chart? Do you have that, that positive attitude of mind? So I think, I think, um, working on this modeling piece would certainly help students to make those connections. And perhaps more than anything else, might encourage students to persist in mathematics later in their school career and later in, in university or in life. Just because they do see its usefulness. Which far too many students right now don't. When will, why do I need to learn this? When will I ever use this? Ever, ever heard of that happening in a mathematical? Yeah, the other thing that I would like to say on the, on the engagement, um, compare the engagement with the perseverance. Like, the engagement score, it's a little unkind, but it's kind of a business score. So if the students were doing mathematics of some kind, even if it was a mathematical worksheet, as long as they weren't copying notes off this, off the teacher board and into their, so, um, as long as they were doing that, they got the engagement. They were doing something. They weren't off staring at the walls. The perseverance score is much more, did it seem as though they might encounter an obstacle and have to work their way around that obstacle? So the perseverance score is really more of a problem-solving reasoning kind of score. If that engagement score is high and the perseverance score is low, it suggests that the students are getting a lot of routine problems to work on during class.
Thank you.
Mrs. Casey?
My defense, I said I had a couple, but I only asked one. You're talking a little bit about engagement and perseverance and I would think that if we asked most parents what application of mathematics looks like at the secondary level, they would say homework. And you touched upon, you know, um, real-life application and periodicals and, um, and I think I'm hearing also still that, that discussion about, um, problem solving and, um, modeling. So if you could talk a little bit more about secondary application and then how are we as a district doing with girls? Did you look at that or have the opportunity to look at that? Cause they're always lag, right?
I think we actually do have the gender data in the full report, but I can't recall it right off the top of my head. I know it wasn't the source data we looked at and the fact that it's not popping up to mind tells me that it wasn't really, it was really glaringly wrong. Cause that was, that, that's one of my little pet issues, so it would have been something I would have taken caution to.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll, I'll give you another great example of an application. So we're on North Avenue in Walbutosa right now. How many grocery stores are there within a mile and a half of where we are, right? Mile and a half, pretty reasonable distance to walk, right? How many if we think about two miles? How many if we think about three miles? Let's drop you in the middle of the Rufus King neighborhood now in the city and ask the same question. A mile and a half, two miles, three miles. So there's a lot of modeling like we could do. Like, we could take out maps. We could look at where those grocery stores are. We could look at distances and we could look at, you'd wanna look at not just straight line distances. You wanna start taking into account roads and things like that. You can't walk through the buildings. Um, you wanna watch out for the lion. But then what implication does that have for the economics of each of those neighborhoods? You know, who has, how, and how many people are in those neighborhoods? And how many people have access to fresh produce in that sort of radius? So you can start to really ask some interesting questions. And the mathematics to get at that is not terribly complex. I need a couple of pieces of very elementary algebra. I need a couple of pieces of geometry. I could kind of amp that up as much as I wanted if I wanted to zoom in and get more and more complex about that. Are the voting patterns in the district rep- what I would expect based on exit polls, based on phone polls? Was this election fair? That's one that brings in the statistics, but is a really fascinating sort of question to ask. So those are the sorts of tools that I would wanna see kids coming out of high school with ability to ask that question and mobilize some mathematical tools to be able to figure out, right? Here's some ways that I could start to answer that question and pick it apart.
I think I tried to do that tonight even saying, you know, it's its own entity, but there are just gobs of ways to do cross-curricular learning with math, social studies and everything you just said.
I was, I mean, I, I was sitting here listening to Mike describe it and, and he was hitting another of my buttons. Cause what, to me, what he was talking about was social studies. Wouldn't it be wonderful?
Economics.
If we could do something like that in a social studies class and pick up on the math tools that we've been learning. And do it in the math class also, right? But why, why is math its own entity? Because we don't pull out math and use it in other curricular areas where we, where it, where it really would help us to make sense of what's right.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up?
Oh, yeah.
Just one, how are our teachers being trained? New teachers that are coming to the district? Uh, you have this wonderful way of presenting, this is what I would do. You know, to bring out the modeling. Yet my concern is what you, what you had indicated to us. You go into a lot of high school classrooms and it, it's opening the book and we're gonna deliver. So are we getting these teachers that are able to cross-curricular, that understand? I mean, they understand the standards, but are they willing to think beyond? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yes. I think you've got some. You just hired two out of my secondary teacher preparation program. At least, which is fantastic.
Eddie studies.
So, yes, um, so I'm happy about that. I'd like to think that they came out of my class with those sorts of skills because in my mathematics methods class and I, granted, I only get them for two semesters and they're doing field experience and they're doing student teaching and that's not the s- that may not be the instruction. They do eh, five days out of every week for a hundred eighty instructional days. But I know with confidence that the ones that walk out of my classroom have the ability to do that when they're asked to do that. They're gonna be first-year teachers, so be gentle with them. But I think you've got teachers coming out now that have the ability to do that. And I've seen teachers in this district who are veteran teachers who have that ability as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer, please.
I'm trying to somehow crystallize in my mind what to take from this to be sure I have the correct message. But first I'll say just me talking here, not to tell people how we do things, but my perception of how this board behaves is that we don't manage much. We don't interfere much. But we do have expectations and we set a culture of expectations. So, at least for me, for how I understand how to make my contribution as a board member, I need to be sure my expectations are, I'm drawing the correct expectations as outcomes from your presentation. The first expectation is that our student outcomes must be better. The second conclusion I have is that our program is a, our, our choice of curriculum is a good one. The Common Core, you've endorsed Common Core. So I should expect that we will remain committed to the Common Core. As far as our teaching staff, as, um, keep, as, raw material isn't a fair thing to say, but as far as, do we have good teachers? Yes, we do. The board should expect that whatever it is we're doing to select teachers, we should expect we're gonna continue those processes. We should also expect to see, um, more tools provided to our teachers and to our students. The training of the teachers, the, um, materials for the students. So, um, and we should expect, thank you, Mrs. Muwfeld for the question, that we will focus first at, if there is to be a focus or a, um, a sh- uh, you know, a balance weighted one place different from another place, that our, our start should be in the secondary, the secondary level. So, the board, I, a board member, will expect that we will do better. I will expect that we will remain embracing the Common Core. We will, um, continue to support our good teachers and how we've been selecting them. We need to provide them with continuing education. We need to provide our students and teachers with materials. What have I missed?
I, I can add one little thing to that and it's something that we maybe didn't touch on quite as strongly in the presentation as we did in the report. But to think about like the, the student data here, we saw scores that weren't as exceptional as we expected. But the other thing we saw is there was very little difference between the students in the eighth grade general track as compared to the accelerated tracks on this particular assessment. So I think asking the question, are the structures that we have in place to accelerate kids through really doing them justice? Are we maybe pushing too many kids through too quickly and they're not getting the depth of understanding that we want them to have? I don't know that there's an answer necessarily to that question, but I think it's a question that as a board, as a group, that's about accountability. It should be in your mind for the next couple of years.
So, to be careful not to fix the wrong thing, but are you saying that certainly the accelerated students, we should expect outcomes that are higher than the non-accelerated students?
As good, if not better. I mean, I would s- I, if, if students in the accelerated classes were getting a richer understanding in the sort of depth that we wanna see, I would expect to see those Algebra I students who are accelerated in eighth grade performing better than the Math Aids students. And we see them performing a little bit better, but not all that much. And then we see that really, if we go into the high school data there, that those differences get washed away entirely. So I think it's something to wonder about.
Okay.
Are we doing the right thing by, by those kids in accelerating? Are we doing the right thing by, by those kids in accelerating them as quickly and in such a large quantity as we are?
Okay. You know, and my voice to the, to the employees and to the parents and to the teachers, there's so much unhappiness in this world, and unhappiness can be a tremendous motivator, but it can also, if not channeled correctly, can be a tremendous distraction. So, out there in our culture, if we're going to be unhappy, let's not say, oh, we're so unhappy over this Common Core, or we're so unhappy over teacher retention, or we're so unhappy, you know, let's pick the thing to be unhappy about that can move us in the right direction most productively. And we're hearing it tonight, the training of the teachers, the materials for the students, you know, insist that we continue to embrace our direction, but to do it better. Anything else? Anything else? Sound okay?
It sounds, it sounds, it sounds good. I would, as you, as you say, when you say student outcomes need to be better, I don't know that necessarily have to be better across the board. There are some student outcomes that are very good. I think it's a question of adding an extra layer of achievement onto, onto what you're doing.
Well, taking what you're saying, but we want to see fewer zeros and more ones. From a high level in this room, not down to the details here, the micro concepts, but we, we want to see more, we want to see those numbers higher. How they need to go higher, very complex thing for the administration and teachers to work through. Okay, thank you.
They've got the skills to do it. Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Can I?
May I ask one more question, please?
Sure.
Sorry, the very last conversation brought this up to me. So if we decide we do want to get better, and better in the ways, in the skills that you're describing, are we, are the tools we're using measuring that, or how would we measure that going forward without you coming and doing an audit every year?
So, one of the strengths the district has is that you've made real efforts to work on assessment and to, like, I'm going to use K-5 as an example. So you have, you've definitely got a nice assessment system going on in the K-5 grades by using the benchmark assessments, or, might I say the right word?
Try and answer what the benchmark is.
Yes, so, so, so the alignment of the curriculum, and it will eventually be a new curriculum, because we know we're going to replace the old materials. And the instruction that the teachers are using, doing, and through more professional development, that would also be raised and improved. And then your assessment practices, which you've been working on for years, and moving in the direction of formative assessment, those would all indicate, those would all help you realize what you're trying to get to, because you're going to keep those aligned. It's like a, I think it's a three-legged stool, and you have to have all three legs working. You know, you're going to fall over if one of those legs isn't working, so. I think you're in the right, going in the right direction, and each one of those things is going to be improved in this continuous process of studying what you, what you have now and where you want to go.
Thank you.
And I'd just add to that, that work at secondary is, is not as hard as it is in elementary. And I think the teachers, standardized tests can only always tell you so much, even the best standardized test. So you've got the knowledge and the skill with the teachers you have in the district to be able to create assessments, to be able to create, let's say, A common assessments across Algebra I, and to be able to characterize how students are performing and do that. So I think, I think the expertise does live here internally to be able to get that other dimension of the picture that the map data, the ACT data is just not going to give you right now.
Okay, thank you very much. I, I guess what I'm hearing is we have the things in place as we have with our other curricular, curricular reviews. We've been working on the assessments, the Common Core, the benchmarks. So I anticipate, then, that we'll be getting a plan from our curriculum people to address what, what you've identified. And decided is very helpful and very productive. And do you work with them going forward, or is your work here done?
Well, I think it's really not yet.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know in, in the past, we've had an audit, and then we've had a different team come in for implementation and so on, so. But I trust that Mrs. Ehrenberger and company will know the best way to proceed. And if at some point, Mrs. Ehrenberger, you could give us some kind of a timeline, get it to Dr. Erdl, you know, over the next couple of years, how, how this is going to progress, that would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, our next report, Dr. Erdl, a new policy, culturally proficient schools and administration offices, which ties in quite a bit to what we just heard.
Yeah, it's interesting, because it wasn't planned that we'd have this policy following up this report, but it's recommended policy is, I mean, I think with, with most board policies, it's not written from scratch. And the interesting thing that the district that we kind of took the skeleton of this policy from had this policy in place in the seventies. I believe it was the seventies.
Yeah.
Certainly the eighties, but I believe it was the seventies. The reason we're bringing this forward is, there's, there's several different reasons, but I think the biggest reason is really of trying to send a message. And oftentimes, school board policies are meant to take action, and they'll, they'll set a direction. This one is, is one to say, here's our philosophical belief as a school district, and it really provides a lot of support for the work we're trying to do administratively, and it gives us a policy that we can write administrative guidelines toward that support the work of closing achievement gaps and being culturally proficient in our schools. There's a lot of work we're doing, and sometimes we can always find a board policy that relates to the work that we're doing, certainly. I look at equal opportunity schools as one example of saying, here's a distinct effort to say, we're going to close the achievement gap, and kind of contrary to what they were talking about, that moving too, too many kids forward, the concept is, we're going to say, these kids are moving forward, we believe in them, and they're going to be successful in the AP courses. We want a, we want a board policy that, in the school board, that clearly supports through not just messaging words, but through a policy that says, we support this work, we believe it needs to be done very clearly, there is, there are gaps. And how those gaps got there, I guess we can sit and debate for years on end without closing gaps. Our job is to close gaps, whether it's discipline gaps, achievement gaps, it's for all areas of, that are considered underserved. Schools, students with disabilities, raised poverty, limited English proficiency. So, there's a lot in here. It's philosophical. The administrative guidelines, I think, are where the rubber hits the road, and I think this gives us the ability to create administrative guidelines that support the work and give direction to the work we're doing. You see it in the district development plan, which I'm going to talk a little bit about later, but each year, there's going to be specific targets that we have to close the achievement gaps. We know they're there, it's not new. And it's interesting when we have an outside audit come in, and it's one of their strongest points, saying you need to close the achievement gaps, and everybody always says they're everywhere. Other districts have the same gaps. I guess I really don't, I shouldn't say I don't care, but that's not our issue. Our issue is Walertosa, and we want to be the ones to, to address it. And I think this policy really sets the stage for that and helps us move our work forward. So that is why it's being brought forward at this time to the board.
Thank you. Board members, questions or comments on the policy? Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. I think this is a, excuse me, a good policy. The one question I have, as I read it, is if it was broad enough. And what I mean by saying that is that it seems that nearly all of it is talking about racial and ethnic diversity until you get to the very end. And then you mention sexual orientation, gender, religious, and also economic diversity. And the achievement gap itself is going to include all of those. So I'm wondering if it could be written in a way so that it's more inclusive of the diversity that we're actually talking about. For example, in number one of the second set of numbered items on the first page, where it says, "The district shall foster welcoming environments in all the schools and administration offices that reflect and support the racial and ethnic diversity of the student populations," sir. Should we just take out racial and ethnic and just say that we're supporting the diversity of the student populations? So I'm, I'm just wondering, I know the intent is to respect and support all of the different types of diversity in the district, but I don't know if the policy reads that way to me.
Can I speak to that?
If I can just respond, I think there's two ways to look at it. One is, yes, that's a good point, and it looks like it's just a follow-up on the last page, but if we are going to be real about our achievement gap, our biggest and most problematic achievement gap right now in our school district is our African-Americans are not achieving at the level. That is the biggest gap, and I guess that's debatable as well, but it's where we spent most of our focus. Administrative guidelines can be written in a way to address exactly what you're saying, and I know they will be. The other way to look at it is, say, you're right, it should be more neutral and should be more universal, I guess, but I think the, the message in here, what I like about the way this is written, is that it does have a strong emphasis in that area, because it is our biggest, our biggest challenge right now.
Okay. Because I guess my only other comment would be, I mean, there are certain high-achieving students that don't feel like they belong in our schools. And so if this addresses that as well, then I'm all for it, because I, I think, you know, obviously, we want everyone to be comfortable in our schools, and if this policy addresses the achievement gap and the feeling of belonging by all students, then I think that's a good thing.
And I think, to actually support your point, it's, we don't want to get just, because when you hear achievement gap, most people's mind goes to, to exactly what I'm saying is our biggest challenge, and we've just got to make sure we keep communicating that there's more gaps, and it's not just our African-American students, that there are a lot of kids, like you said, that don't feel like it's their school.
Anybody else? Okay, so this is the first reading, and we will be voting on it at our next meeting, so, Mr. Kroner, or anybody else, if you have thoughts or edits or anything that you want to share in the meantime.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
What will change in our district from passing this? Is this just to affirm what we do, or is this to stimulate additional actions and to cause additional actions to be taken?
Both. I think it'll cause, I know it will cause additional actions, because it puts pressure. I mean, what's measured is worked on. When the board says, this is important, this needs to be fixed, when we have a math audit that comes in, and when we, we step out and say, tell us where we, where we can get better, this puts pressure on me as a superintendent to make sure we put together administrative guidelines that support this policy. I think our emphasis in having our position that relates to diversity and equity is a critical component that's going to help really push that issue. And so it, it'll do both, but more importantly, to me, I'm not satisfied with what we've done to this point, because we haven't closed, I mean, we've done a lot, and we've closed some gaps, but we're not where we want to be. So it's meant to stimulate further action.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
I think it, it emphasizes the ongoing expectation that, and I know we have a lot to fix, but even if we didn't have a lot to fix, you, you have to continue stating the expectation, or, or things slip. And we do have a lot to fix, so our role as et cetera, as, as the place where expectations are set and culture is driven, and other roles as well, of course, we have, but I think that's very important, that we do this.
Thank you. Well said. Anyone else? Okay. Is there any community comment on either of these reports? Okay, seeing none. Dr. Erdl?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you standing up. Hi, I'm Sarah Cortechato. I teach math at East. I just want to say thank you for all your awesome questions for the auditors. It was really hard to, to listen to, because it felt very personal. And so I just, I mean, there's so many things I could say, I could talk hours on the things that they commented on, but one thing I think is glaring as a society, especially in the United States, is it's okay for us to say, I'm bad at math. But do you ever hear anybody say, I'm bad at reading? And that's socially acceptable? So I think, like, some of your questions got at that, and so I truly appreciate where we're headed, and I think Mike and Kevin and, I don't know the other two ladies' names, because they did the elementary, are really pushing us where we want to go. I can attest for my math department and West, who I work closely, or most closely with, we truly want to get to where they are, and our resources are lacking. And so a lot of us do go online and try to find those resources, which is very time-consuming. So I'm super excited to find those resources and say, okay, we've got them, now we can push our kids in the right direction. So I just want to say thank you.
May I?
Sure.
Please, and I know you heard it, but please recall their emphasis that, you know, where, and my question, where, where should the unhappiness be focused?
Right.
They, they said our choice of direction was correct. They said our teachers were, were, were capable, and now they need to be resourced. So there's a lot that was said there. We know these days, there's a lot of noise out in our political world about Common Core and public education, and, well, Common Core and our public education received a nice endorsement here tonight, but we were told we need to provide focus and alignment and resources for our good people and for our good direction.
Definitely, definitely. I heard it. I just want to say thank you, because, again, your questions helped flush a lot of the discussions we've had out, which weren't necessarily in the short report. And again, I haven't seen the long report yet, but, and two, at high school, we have that dilemma of, do we teach these, do these rigorous activities when we know we're going to get tested on the WKC or the MAP or the ACT, which is multiple choice? And so there is a huge dilemma, and that's procedural, and we want our kids to think. And so, you know, it's, we only have 180 days, what do we do with those? And, and that's not a decision just I should be making with my kids, but often, you know, we do, and our collaborative team's like, okay, how do we get at that? And again, so I think the district is moving in a great direction, so I just want to say thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see you getting up there. Dr. Erdl, the district development plan review.
Thank you. The, as the board knows, each year, we put together the district development plan in August for the following year, and at the end of the year, we report out. The district development plan has goals, initiatives, and projects, and it's basically our accountability measure to say, here's what we're going to do this year, and then we report out saying, how well did we do it, what we said we're going to do. So what I want to do is, I'm not going to go through, it's an extensive report, and the board has it, it'll be posted online, but walk through some of the highlights. And then as we go throughout the year, there'll be a number of those, these areas that we'll be touching on with more in-depth reports to kind of share where we're going, what we're doing. I think you've, you've heard math here tonight, you're going to see math on the district development plan for next year and recommended initiatives and things we'll be working on. I can just give you that one foreshadowing that you'll, you'll see. But it really is our accountability measure. I take it personal when we look at that. I have that one-page document that says, we're going to do this. We walked through it, I know administratively, over and over, about different, the initiatives, how are we doing, where are we at, and what do we have to accomplish? So it's an important component of what we do as a school district. Some of the highlights, I think, when you look at it, the state report cards, 22, we're 22nd out of 367 districts that were rated on the report cards, certainly the most diverse and certainly the largest, diverse and largest together in the top 25 of the districts. So I take the opportunity to say, we are the top school district in the state of Wisconsin by all measures. But, you know, the, the nice thing, and when they were talking about what do you need to improve on, where do you need to, to get, I think in education, I think that's the great thing about education, is you never do arrive, and there's always something and always an area to work on. Mr. Meyer, you pointed out for that policy, too, it really does, we could, we could be scattered and be going, chasing our tails all over, trying to fix everything, and what the policies do is help us focus and say, these are the most important things to our school district. So I, I think when you look at the school report cards, the other example, too, is out of the top 25 schools, out of over 2,000 schools in the state, we have five of the top 25 schools. We have the number one school, the WSTEM, and that's been two out of the last three report cards. This year, we don't get the opportunity, because... This year, we don't get the opportunity because school report cards aren't coming out. So just one example, and I think it's the one measure the state uses. So we do compare, as does everybody else that has internet access, and they look up and say, "How well are your schools doing?" Our map growth continues to grow. It's at the highest it's ever been. 67% of our students are achieving their growth in reading, and 73.7% of our students are achieving their growth in math. So we're happy. We'd like to see those growth numbers continue to get better. Our goal that we have is 80%. We're not there yet. It's a stretch goal, but I think we can get there. Certainly, some of our buildings and certainly some of our grade levels have met that 80% mark, but as a district, that's where we want to get. And I think there's some trends in that data we can look at for promising practices of how we can replicate those. AP, 944 exams taken. That's the highest ever, with 72% of our students scoring three or better. The AP is one of the four goals that I think we've continued to make progress on each year, probably our highest progress. So we keep working on getting more and more students to take AP courses, but more importantly, getting them ready to take those AP courses and have the confidence to be able to be successful in them. So something we'll continue to work on. This year, we implemented the evaluation model or the effectiveness project for all teachers and principals. It was a huge project. It was a big change for how we were doing evaluations. I think we went through, we kept off some of the components to try to give an easier transition, surveys being one example, which will be coming in this year. But I think a lot of the feedback that we've gotten is it can be a helpful system. I think one thing that will certainly help people is their renewal for their licensure. It won't be a dual process that if they're doing, keeping their portfolio in the effectiveness project, that can duplicate as their license renewal as well. So we'll continue to grow, get better with it, training that will be taking place. And really, the ultimate goal is to create and have better teachers and better principals and have them more confident with what they're doing. So in that regard, I think it's been successful to this point. The grading transformation, I think it was even mentioned. In earnest, we undertook it this past year, and we'll continue to grow and work on our grading transformation. I think one thing we realized, even at the elementary level, we've been doing standards-based grading for a long, long time, that there's some work to be done there to make sure our people at the elementary level truly understand what we're trying to accomplish with the grading there. So that work will continue to take place. Virtual Academy, that has grown. We get more, we've gotten more and more students. We're interacting with the running rebels through our MCAP program for the Coney program. So we've grown that in numbers and success, and we're getting hopefully close to the place where there's a point financially where open enrollment students are taking, are making enough money so we can afford the courses for our resident brick-and-mortar students. So unfortunately, in a lot of ways, our virtual school enrollment at the brick-and-mortar schools has not grown as fast as some have thought and even I thought. And I think that's a good sign that we're able to continue to offer courses in the classroom, in the buildings for our students and what they're wanting. But we do keep that, and we think it's important that our students have those options, so that we'll continue to work to grow our virtual school. Montessori, we're sitting in the seventh and eighth grade classroom for next year. So this room will be converted in August, I believe, and ready for the seventh and eighth graders to come through, and the boardroom's being moved upstairs in the Fisher building. But it's exciting that we have a seventh and eighth grade program, and the numbers are continuing to grow for that, but we have enough certainly to open that program. Our culture and climate survey, which in the DDP is referred to as the PLC survey, it's really more of a culture and climate survey. It's a short survey. Teachers take it each year, and we look at variances from year to year in buildings. But really, my number I look at is the bottom numbers for the district. And for six years running, we've had consistent culture and climate numbers. There's been trends up and down at different buildings, but overall, as a district, it's been consistent, which is, I think, a success considering what we've gone through over the past four or five years in the culture and climate and public education in Wisconsin. So one of my goals is to make sure people want to work here and students want to go to school. Our BLTs, we continue with the model, I think, is the most successful model of professional development, and that work will continue this year, of building leadership teams. Common Core implementation, ELA, math, social studies. You've heard the mantra over and over in the math presentation, but we continue to work on Common Core implementation throughout the district as well. The math audit I had down in my notes, you've heard that here this evening, I think one of the things that speaks a lot about our district is we're willing to, Mr. Bowden pointed out, our achievement. I've often said, "Our most consistent achievement in growth is math across the district." And we're willing to step out and say, "Expose us. Let's look at even our most consistent scoring area," and the willingness of the district to go out and say, "Somebody come in and tell us where we can get better." I think that's a great sign for what the work we're doing, a great sign for our teachers. And I know I'm sitting here listening, and I kept, wanted to argue with a couple of different points, but that's really why we do the audit, is to tell us what we're doing well, and more importantly, what we can improve on. So we did that this year, and we'll continue with different audits. Not exactly sure if we'll have any audits for this coming year in our DDP, but that's kind of a component of what we've adopted in our district. Tech integration, we started with coaches this past year, moving to a full Chromebook employment at the high school level and, in particular, at the middle school. And they're going to be basically one-to-one, but it's not going to be a take-home type environment. But moving forward with coaching, we know and we hear, whether it's math, it's technology, any area, that our teachers look for that help and that support to be able to come, become better with the use of it. Equal-opportunity schools, we'll continue to support. The students have been identified for AP courses and are enrolled in the AP courses, and we've added a great number of students, minority students, to take AP classes. And now the point is to make sure we're supporting them in those classes. The idea of, my opinion, my idea of how we do this, the approach of saying, "Let's identify the students we know or we feel can be capable in AP classes." That's one piece of it. And then start building from the bottom up to make sure we're identifying students early on. And it was interesting that they pointed out to make sure that the under-identification of students at the early levels and making sure we're providing the support as we go along, so it's not a question of when they become sophomores and saying, "Let's identify these students for AP classes." But having high expectations for all students and making sure all students are pushed in that manner as well. The compensation system was put into place, and we've, we'll continue to monitor the compensation system to make sure that it is what we, it's doing what we want it to do, that we're recognizing our best teachers and we're compensating them at the highest level, and that all teachers are being compensated at a fair level. I don't think there's any one perfect system for compensation for education, and we're trying to make sure the one we have is the best to hire and retain the best teachers. So it's not something, I know when we put it in place, I said it's not something that we'll just sit and say, "Okay, it's a done deal." We have to continue to monitor it and get feedback on it. The one change that we did do this year is we went through every single teacher again. We were going to say, "Every three years, there'll be an opportunity to move on the schedule," and we said, "Three years is too long of a time." So we administratively went through every single teacher, and we also have an appeals process that has been used on a number of occasions. So we'll continue to refine that. The year-round school is, was looked at this past year. It didn't go as far as I would have liked. I still have a goal to bring a recommendation to the school board for the 1718 school year. So there's a lot of work that's still being done. We actually have one of our teachers that is going through a master's program, MBA program, that is looking at year-round school as a project. And I've asked that person to look at it more than just a project and bring in the district resources to move forward with a recommendation for some sort of year-round school. So I'm still hopeful that we bring a recommendation. I think there's, I know there's people that are looking for those opportunities. I know we have teaching staff that would like to teach in it, and I know there's parents and students that would like the opportunity. Our athletic fields plan is moving forward. The West Field is underway. The Whitman Soccer Field was done. Along with that, if you've been anywhere in the school district this summer, you know that there's, basically, pretty much every school is up for grabs right now. That there's a ton of construction that's going on. Melissa is here tonight, is, she's managing a lot of projects. East Theater hasn't started yet, but the East Theater is being renovated. It starts this coming year. Longfellow, right now, if you walk on the second floor, doesn't look like a school. Bathrooms are being redone, the ceilings, lights. It's going to be an awesome renovation. East High School, the whole first floor, looks like a new school, been repainted. Instead of the oatmeal or cream of wheat color, it's actually red and white. So we'll get to the second floor shortly after. But the Wilson Stage is turning into lunchroom, going to make that whole space much more usable. Jefferson Playground has been redone. Fortunately, it's just the first layer of asphalt that's on there right now, so it will be flat eventually. And the security entrances at all four of our secondary schools are completely underway, as well as the whole office area at Longfellow is being redone. So there's a lot of construction that's taking place, too, and a lot of those things are included in our district development plan. So there's a lot in there. I touched on a few things, and we'll be having more discussion as a board about next year's district development plan, but bringing things forward next month to set things in action. I think the goals, we know the number one goal in the district development plan has to change. The WKC is gone. I don't know that we can create our own test of what we're going to use for a state test. The Badger apparently is gone. I would say maybe it's a lime coming in now. That's too appleish. Anyway, I'll just stop while I'm behind. But I do appreciate the work that went into the district development plan, the student. Teaching and Learning Department really does the yeoman's work of putting that together and getting all the data together and making sure that we stay on track with what we're doing. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. So, board members. Mrs. Casey?
The update that I'm most excited about is that I am in summer school carpool. And I don't know, I'm taking kids home all over the city. And we went past Jefferson recently, and they're like, "We're really disappointed they didn't level that out." So tomorrow morning, we're going past Jefferson, and I'm going to tell them that it will be level.
There'll be no concrete things to trip on. It'll be layered up. It'll be all good.
Other questions or comments? Well, I actually, I had a couple of things, specifics, that kind of struck me. Page five on the WKCE, the limited English proficiency scores, we seem to be going in the wrong direction on those. And I was wondering, are we getting a lot more students with limited English proficiency?
I don't think we've seen any significant increases, but yeah, this year, we actually put some things in place because we, there's more work that we can do with our limited English proficient students. And so we brought in a consultant this year in that area, used our Title III funds and brought in a consultant. She worked with the teachers this year as part of the Student Services Audit Report. We also viewed that as applying to our English language learners. So they had coaching this year. They were included in the co-teaching and co-serving. One of the things that we know is that they benefit from being in the classroom, the general education classroom as well. So we're aware that those are some things that we need to work on, and we've been paying much closer attention to. They also have access data, which is related to their English proficiency. So we're doing a lot more of disaggregation work with that data for the first time this year. So I don't think it's due to a significant increase. I just think that we need to pay more attention and see if there's some things we could do.
Yeah, my question really was what I asked, you know, are we getting a lot more kids? I know at one point, JK at Madison, no, Underwood School, she had kids in there with, I think she said, seven different languages. And none of them spoke English in addition to their, to their home language. So are you identifying a need for any more resources? Or do you think you may be? Okay. Don't answer that tonight. Don't answer that tonight. Thank you. Yeah, it was a curious thing to me. That's all.
I can also.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. And then, Dr. Erdl, on the, I think it was page 17, the PLC survey? And that's been consistently inching up, but is the rate that that's going at, is that significant to you?
No, and I actually asked somebody that knows data, and when I talked to Michelle Anderson Lamb, she said it's not a statistically significant difference. I, you know, that's one you're always looking to improve. I think with culture and climate and that survey, we're going to, we're going to start looking at a different tool for that because we're going to be doing a lot of different surveys. I mean, that one has, its scope and purpose six years ago was what we needed at the time, and now I think that's kind of changed. A lot of things have changed, and I don't know that that provides the kind of information we're looking for. We're going to be doing a lot of surveys with, teachers are going to be surveying parents, principals are going to be surveying parents, surveying parents and teachers. We're going to have a lot of kind of survey information that I think will give a better picture of what our climate is like. So.
Okay. So, yeah, you did. And that's kind of what I was thinking of. These questions have been the same throughout these six or seven years? I guess this is what you'd expect. People are kind of rote, rote-ly responding, unless something.
I hope not.
Really, well, no, I mean, unless something really positive happened in the year or really negative. So that was all, yeah. I mean, and there's still great results, but I was just wondering if you thought that was significant. And then I think this question was actually answered on our agenda tonight, but we are going to continue. Page 26, the technology instructional teacher leaders.
And I believe, actually, one of our new ones is.
You approved a new hire tonight?
Right, right, right. So, because when I read this, I didn't, it didn't, it said we piloted it.
And also, when we hired for our instructional coaches, because Jenny Schultz was an instructional coach, we included in that hire that they needed to have technology integration skills. And the other, we had two openings because Meg Boyd had resigned at the end of the school year. And so we're filling the other position with Jason Thro, who is spent, was point five this year doing technology integration. So he is moving into an elementary coaching position where we have emphasis on tech integration as part of improving instruction. So we're excited to have that technology piece brought in through those positions when we had an opportunity.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you to you and your team that put this together. Dr. Erdl, you are the driving force behind listening to the board and the community and your staff and students and parents to actually make these things happen. So every year, it's really exciting, and we really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Are there any, is there any community comment on the district development report review? Is there any community comment on any other items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene into an executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation in conference room A. Statutory exemption to, as long as we still have these Wisconsin Open Meetings law, is contained in section 1985-1C. May I have a motion, please?
Absolutely. Moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Glante, please. Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Krorner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall? Yes. So we're adjourned nine o'clock in.